Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Chatham Select Board meeting of May 24, 2022 pursuant to Governor Baker's June 16, 2021 signing of an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, including the extension of his March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. General laws 30A, section 20 until July 15, 2022. This meeting of the Chatham Select Board is being conducted via in-person and remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately assess, access, excuse me, the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1508-945-4410, conference ID 203386491, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams, the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and a simulcast on Channel 18, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access. We will post a recording of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. So I just want folks to bear with me. I'm a little rusty with the, with the high-tech stuff, so Jill's going to be my assistant here and letting me know who's raising their hand. But before we get into the minutes or anything, I just wanted to take a moment to recognize the passing of George Goodspeed Jr., who left, left, left us on Election Day, the 19th. George was born and raised in Chatham, lifelong devotee and absolutely adored this town, but his, his commitment to the town was evidenced in his willingness to serve. And he was our field driver and fence viewer from 1985 to 1986. He was on the Architectural Advisory Committee from 87 to 90, and then on our Cemetery Commission, a real longstanding member of the Cemetery Commission from 1990 to 2021, and he was on the HBDC from 1986 to 1993. And he was also in the town band and was a presence all around town, so just a moment to recognize George. And I thank you very much. So the first item of business is to review the minutes of May 10 in May 17. And I'll entertain, oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, we'll start the meeting, let's see. We'll do a roll call. I'd like to start with Mr. Castro down in, to the northwest corner.
Present.
And Ms. Davis.
Present.
And our new member, Mr. Shell, welcome, Mr. Shell.
Thank you, present.
Congratulations, Michael. And Mr. Metters.
Present.
And the chair is present. And now, onto the minutes. Entertain a motion for, to move the May 2nd, the May 10th minutes, I mean.
So moved.
Okay, and a second.
Second.
Comments, edits, suggestions on the May 10th minutes? Wow, hearing none. Okay, we'll take a roll call vote. We'll start with the gentleman of the northwest, Mr. Castro.
Aye.
Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Shell.
Abstain.
Mr. Metters.
Aye.
Mr. Dyken says aye. And a motion to accept the minutes of May 17, please.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any edits, discussions, anybody? Okay, we'll start for approval. Mr. Castro.
Aye.
Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Shell.
Abstain.
Mr. Metters.
Aye.
And the chair says aye. So I kind of glossed over the presence of Mike Shell, but congratulations on a great victory and welcome to the, and welcome to the Select Board.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
You bet.
Looking forward to working with all of you and with the town of Chatham.
Great, well, welcome, Michael. Now we're off to public announcements and agenda item requests. I think we have a couple, we have Cory here, Mr. Metters.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a agenda item request and then a announcement. The agenda item request is, I'd like to put on our agenda in the relatively near future, the Select Board acceptance of the generous gift that's being offered on the Elders Garage property. I think procedurally, we need to cover that. I am aware that staff and town council is working out all the details, so I'll defer to them for the best timetable on that, but I think we should do that in a relatively prudent manner. And then the, the other item I'd like to address is, since we're going to be talking about this later in the evening, is I'm just going to give a rundown of the board committee and commission vacancies as of today, May 24, 2022. So currently, Cape Cod National Seashore Advisory Committee, one opening, Committee for the Disabled, one regular opening, one associate, Community Housing Partnership, one, Conservation Commission, one, Energy and Climate Action Committee, one, Human Services Advisory Committee, one, Local State Building Code Board of Appeals, four openings, North Beach Advisory Committee, five, Open Space Committee, one alternate, Pleasant Bay Alliance Representative, one, Public Ceremonies Committee, three, Railroad Museum Group, two, Traffic Safety Committee, one regular, one alternate, Wastewater Intermunicipal Agreement Advisory Board, one, Water and Sewer Advisory Committee, one, members serve three-year terms, associates and alternates serve one-year terms. So anyone interested, please fill out a talent form and submit it to the town. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Cory, and maybe later on when we look at our lineup, we'll look at the ones that have so many vacancies and see whether or not they're, whether it's still viable or not. Jill.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have two announcements. First is for the transfer station on Memorial Day, the holiday on Monday, May 30. We'll have modified hours, so the transfer station will be open from 8:00 a.m. until 12:00 noon, and again, that's Monday, Memorial Day, May 30. And I do want to announce the town's Memorial Day ceremony, sorry, town's Memorial Day ceremony will be held on Memorial Day, May 30, outdoors on the community center front lawn at 10:00 a.m. And as seating will be very limited, we're encouraging participants to bring their own chairs. So again, it's Monday, May 30, 10:00 a.m., outdoors in the front lawn at the community center. And followed by that, I think that select, and Dyken's was, I'm sorry, Selectman Castro was going to announce the American Revolutionary War Memorial event, but I'll turn it over to Katie Donovan instead. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Jill. So yes, also on Monday, May 30, at approximately 11:00 a.m., Chatham's new Revolutionary War Memorial will be dedicated at Chase Park, followed by a reception at the Godfrey Windmill. The starting time of the dedication is approximate because dedication ceremony officials will be first attending Chatham's traditional Memorial Day ceremonies, and then will proceed directly to Chase Park to dedicate the Revolutionary War Memorial. Thank you.
Great, that's a good lineup. Selectman Castro?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just, the tentative start time, we're hoping, is 11 o'clock, and we probably will be able to do that. There'll be a short procession, as Katie indicated, led by Colonel Godfrey from the Memorial Day ceremonies down to Chase Park, and I think people will have a good time. The plaque is supposed to be installed tomorrow. The stone is in place, so Katie and prior to her, Ally Sabatino worked very closely with the working group and a lot of other people who will be recognized on Monday. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Great effort. I've purposely not gone and looked at the stone yet in anticipation of seeing it on Memorial Day, but that's a great lineup, having the ceremony and then going to the, to the dedication of the Revolutionary Memorial, that's great. Are there any agenda item requests, either by board members here and/or anybody online? Jill, do you see anybody over there?
No, no one online.
Okay. Any agenda item requests by the board? I see none, okay, then we'll move on. We have, now we have public comments on our business agenda this evening. The business agenda is typically rather short, and I think the board actually needs a little breather, if you will, so sort of a welcome agenda. On the business agenda tonight, we have our liaison assignments, that's next up, then we have committee reappointment interview procedure, we'll have some discussion there. And consider renaming the, or naming, not renaming, naming the family school preschool support program after Dr. Florence Selden, and then an agenda item on National Flood Insurance Program. Then we're going to go into an executive session and rely on Mr. Castro to make that motion. So first up, I don't see anybody out there with any public comment on our business agenda this evening. Jill, do you see anybody?
Nope.
Okay. So first business agenda item, our Select Board Committee Liaison Assignments, and we did get a lineup along with our, in our package, and I think apropos of Mr. Metters reading kind of the committees that are out there, let's, let's dig in. Let me fucking sign my, here we go. I think the first, first things first, as we look at what Selectman Kokolas had in terms of responsibilities and, and who would like what falling out from, from his departure from the board, I can't even find my list now, can I? Oh, thanks. Thank you. So Peter was on the Airport Commission. Now, now the problem's been put to bed. So any volunteers for the Airport Commission?
Well, I'll, I'll just say, when I looked at this list and not really knowing what to expect, I, I looked in particular at Peter's list, and as the rookie here anticipated that there might be some movement, at least gentle suggestion, that I be available for what's on his list. And so I'll just say generally, subject to what the other board members would like, I'm happy to take that on. There are some other things that I might have an interest in, but in the first instance, I will simply say that, that I'm happy to do that. As far as the Airport Commission is concerned, I, I think in, in the number of the discussions that I had in the, in the campaign, while I didn't make any promises, that's something that, that I would be willing to take on if, if, if that's the board's view of, of what would be good for me.
Mr. Castro.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I, I welcome what, what Mike just said. There are a couple of committees that are listed under Peter that would automatically shift. He's going to continue as the Cape-like.
Yeah.
Compact representative.
Yes.
Do we have to vote that? I don't know.
I don't know.
We should ask.
I think you should, since it is before you tonight.
Okay, we can include that in a vote. He was also an OPEB trustee, basically ex-official because he was chair of the board, and we generally have, so that probably should shift over to you.
I have been.
I know, and then another member would, would go on the OPEB board with you. And the Summer Residence Committee generally falls to the chair, so you may want to look at your listing and drop a committee or two to even things off, but that's, those are, those are the only suggestions that I have. I'm very comfortable with the ones I have.
Yeah, just a couple of comments. Monomoy Legislation Advocacy Subcommittee. I think, I think that's not a formal deal, we can make it ad hoc as needed. I would certainly sit on that with Shereen, I assume, but as needed, we don't, we haven't met in a long time, and that was really to address the issue with National Fish and Wildlife Service.
Yeah, that was a direct, direct response to where we were with them, and we seem to have mitigated that along the way, so.
So I think that's an ad hoc type of deal, and maybe even included at the bottom with an asterisk saying, you know, when needed. And I wanted to talk about the North Beach Subcommittee a bit, when we have five vacancies that Cory just listed. What are your thoughts, Shereen?
I'd like to recommend that we disband that committee and just do it as a subcommittee to the Board of Selectmen. I think it's been the way it has been since I've served on the board. We've reached out to community to ask them to engage in that committee, and we really haven't, we haven't seen any real interest in it, except for maybe, I don't know, maybe one person in the course of a few years. So I, I think that it's, it's well-managed, I think the North Beach is well-managed now, and I'm, I'm fine with doing it as an ad hoc committee to the board, and I'm, I'm fine with staying on that as well.
Okay, a, as am I, I mean, I'd like to stay on it, that's, and I agree with you, Shereen, that's, yeah, I think that's smart. So we have two motions to be included here, Peter to continue, or to continue on the Cape Light and then to reduce the numbers of members on the North Beach, or actually nuke the, the North Beach Advisory, right?
Yeah.
North Beach Subcommittee. Terms of Peter's other responsibilities, anybody screaming for bikeways or cable advisory or energy and climate? I think, Mike, you'll do, I think you'd be very interested in energy and climate, I think that's right up your sweet spot, yeah.
Yeah, I would take that, yes.
Yeah, good, good. And then Planning Board, anybody more interested than Mike might be? I think Mike's legal background, I think, would be excellent.
I'd be happy to take it, but subject to the wishes of other members.
You okay?
No, I'm perfectly fine, I mean, I've served on it before, I, I served as a liaison, I served on the planning board, so I put some time in there, and if Mike wants to take it, I have no problem with that.
Okay, Cory. And then Summer Residence, I'll take as, as chair. And then the only other thought I had, I had one other thought. Dean, you're going to continue in the Elders Public Library, I think that's appropriate. Did have one other thought. Oh, OPEB trustee, who, who, I'd certainly want to continue, but who would like to, everybody here has that experience as an OPEB trustee, absent, Mike, so if you're interested, it's pretty interesting.
I'm happy to take that on.
Okay.
If you're offering, yeah, and.
Get him some exposure and on we go.
Yeah, good.
Okay?
While I have your attention, if I may, if you'd like to lighten your load, I'd be happy to take on the Committee for the Disabled.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep, yep, super. So we have a couple changes. Peter to Cape-like Compact, negating the North Beach Subcommittee, Mike keeps OPEB, and any other things, and Mike's picking up Committee for the Disabled. And then Parking Solutions Working Group, Peter was there, I'm on, I'm on that. Dean, you have any, any interest in being on the Parking Committee?
I'd be happy to do it. Where's, where's this listed?
Yeah, it's not, it's not a, Peter and I have, have served on it.
It's not listed here, I think.
No, it's not.
It's a town manager, established working group.
Your group. Well, I did serve on the original downtown Parking Committee, I'm hap, happy to do it.
It's not a huge lift, Dean?
No.
An hour every other week, I think, or?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, an hour every other week. We're going to, it's going to be time limited, there's going to be a series of recommendations that will be made to the Select Boards, so this is going to be a forever thing. But seeing as how you had a lot of experience, you know, a couple of years ago, two or three years ago now, but every once in a while, people remind me that you're.
Sure.
That'd be great, thank you.
Take that on.
Thank you. Okay. Alec, you got all that? I think, I think we need a motion.
I'll offer a motion that we approve the liaisons' listing as amended this evening.
A second.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Any further, any further ideas or exchanges? Okay, let's take a vote. Selectman Castro.
Aye.
And Selectman Davis.
Aye.
Select Board Member Shell.
Aye.
Cory, our vice chair.
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Thank you very much, good job.
Do you want, Mr. Chair, did you want to take the motion for Mr. Kokolas?
I do, yeah. Motion to appoint Peter Kokolas in the Cape-like Compact, please.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, votes, Mr. Castro?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Shell?
Aye.
Mr. Metters?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Thank you very, very much.
One more, Mr. Chair, so the North Beach Committee, if the board wants to take a vote, I just have to look at how it was formed, and that might require either a public hearing or a specific agenda item. You want to hold on that one? Okay, we'll, we'll research that.
Good point. Okay, thank you. The reappointment interview procedure is the next item on the agenda, and kind of want to hear from the board first, I have my own notions, but not a lot of change, but I'd like to hear any, any ideas. Mr. Castro.
Mr. Chairman, I think we should have a good discussion on this, and I appreciate what Alec has, the information Alec provided us today with the number of terms expiring and so forth. I did have a question for Alex, Alec, I'm sorry, on the advisory boards, commissions and committees, so each one has, for example, the Council on Aging, three terms expiring, one pending application. When you say pending application, does that include people that are already on the board that might be up for reappointment, or those new people?
So the pending applications are new people, so anything that says three terms ending, those are currently held by people in the position, and the one that's pending are people we have within the Talent Bank.
And we haven't heard necessarily from all incumbents about whether they want to be reappointed or not.
So I'm still waiting to hear from a few of them, but most of them I've heard from, it says on the top, there's about 45 that have replied to me, I've reached out to all of them again today to get a final confirmation, so I'm trying to have those results by the end of May, so we can move forward.
Okay. So generally speaking, Mr. Chairman, we have traditionally interviewed every member, every applicant for a regulatory board, including, and we'll add to that, the Airport Commission, whether someone has also applied or not additionally to the existing members, and I think we should probably continue with that, although I'm certainly open to, to revising that because I'll go back to the example I've given before, and that's someone like Frank Messina, who we've interviewed five times, probably, and do you really need to interview someone who has been repeatedly interviewed for the same board? I don't know. I'd like to see us reduce the number of interviews, particularly with respect to advisory boards, because Alec makes the point that if we chose not to interview for terms where no applicants are pending, that means, Alec, that, that there's no new applicant.
Correct, there's nothing in the Talent Bank for any of those committees.
Okay, but there might be people who are incumbents who are seeking reappointments.
Correct.
It would seem to me, and we could reduce the number to 36 interviews if we followed that approach, I think I would kind of favor that, because 58 interviews, or six, what is it, 69, 58 interviews, that's a lot of interviews, and a lot of it is very repetitious. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Castro, for the comments. Anybody else? Ms. Davis?
Thank you, Pete, thank you, Jeff. I think that I agree with you in theory on this, I was wondering if there's a way that we could poll, you know, an interview during the interview process, if we decide that we, a board member wants to interview somebody, even though we may not, that we're able to conduct that interview. And the reason why I say that, I don't want to, like, shout out to anybody for any reason, but we do find, you know, that there is, and I'm not using any particular person as a, as an example, and I appreciate longstanding volunteers for the town, but, you know, sometimes we need to have a fresher approach to things as well, and I've found that there's a couple of situations within committees that I've had where people have been no-shows for the entire year, and just sort of say, yeah, sure, I'll stay on the board, and the, we want to be able to have the opportunity to really address any concerns we may have, because we're appointing people that we want to reflect our philosophies and, and whatnot, so just trying to figure out if there's a vehicle that we'd be able to address that. Maybe it isn't just a poll, you know, from Alec.
The one, Cory, I want to.
No, just going to throw a couple of those comments into the mix. I know, well, it's not reflective in the, in the category because the Cultural Council's membership is currently full, I do know they're considering requesting to be enlarged, to get more members, and if that's the case, they will have to add those interviews in, and I do know there's that one, one person in the Talent Bank who's ready to be interviewed, so that could be adding a couple more interviews shortly. And then the only kind of thought process is for the regulatory, I definitely think we should attempt to have all of us present, but I don't think we, you know, I think we could have some wiggle room if only four of us were present, or three of us were present, because some of these, you know, names or faces are very familiar, but, I mean, the, the spirit is to have everyone here, but maybe set a little bit lesser threshold in the case we get into a time crunch or conflicts to move, move it forward, because we have a fair amount of interviews.
So if you, am I, just what about, just a. So if you, am I, just what about, just a quorum? I mean.
I'm fine with a quorum.
A quorum, and, and, you know, yeah, that's what we've done.
I'm perfectly fine with the three required, and then if we get all four or five of us, that's great. Yeah.
I have a thought, or thoughts. On the first bullet, all regulatory Board and Commission Members whose term is expiring, but they've expressed a wish to be reappointed with no other applicants. So I always suggest that we don't interview those unless a Board, a Select Board Member has a particular interest in making change and/or interest in an interview. So leave it up to our discretion, because to Dean's point, which I find, I found myself, honestly, wasting my time and the interviewees' time as well, because I've interviewed some of these folks eight or nine, you know, five or six or seven or eight times. I know I'm gonna vote for them, I know where they stand, I know how they think, I know how they vote, and it's just kind of, just going through the motions, so I don't really want to waste their time, most notably, because we're probably in an interview mode anyway, but, but, so I think, I think if we, if we, if no one is applying for a regulatory position and a current member that we've interviewed has expressed interest in staying on, unless we have concerns or would like to nominate someone, like, you know, have concerns and really want to interview someone, I would suggest we do that. That's.
Yeah, I'd like that approach, but how would we implement it? Would simply be incumbent upon an individual Select Board Member to notify Alec that we want to interview that person?
And not to beat on, but Frank Messina is a perfect example. I mean, you know, we, many of us, or most of us have interviewed him, you know, many times. So why have him trot in and, you know, for five or 10 minutes or everything and say, hey, how you doing, blah, blah, blah? We're just going through the motions. Mr. Shell.
Yeah, I obviously don't have the experience, it's just been recited. I would endorse the comments that have been made. The only thing I would say is that I would be strongly in favor of a real full-court press to get the interviews done on the basis that has been articulated, including the minimum of a quorum, et cetera. I think it would be very helpful if we could have, and I did read that typically it's done just before the Board meeting, if we could have a fixed time so that we're not fooling around trying to organize schedules of our, on our side. So with that, I would endorse what's been said.
Yeah, we're gonna talk about schedule, you know, going forward, but any other changes to any of the first four bullets on the, on regulatory and/or non-regulatory? Alec, yes?
Mr. Chair, right now, we are trying to plan to do them on Thursday evenings. Right now, it seems to be our projected time for having all the interview sessions. Obviously open to changing it to whatever the Board desires, but that was what we had talked about earlier, Sean and I, so.
Yeah, thank you, Alec. And in fact, that's what we kind of put in place. I think we've done it for, what, four or five months now? If not that, if not longer? What are everybody's feelings?
I'm perfectly fine, yeah.
So it's a regular night, Mike, 5:30, and then we kind of plow through it. Shereen?
We've been doing them via Teams, correct? And if we did that, it's a little easier lift to be able to do them from, you know, your home office or something.
Mr. Chair, yes, as well, we plan on doing them remote, so it would, all those interviews would be remote.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, and Alec, is it only the first Thursdays when it's not the reappointment cycle?
Correct, so when it's not the reappointment schedule and we're doing just general Subcommittee interviewings, then it would be the first Thursday of the month at 5:30, or whenever the Board is amenable and the candidates can make it.
So we're gonna, near crunch time here. So do we up the ante and have it, you know, every other Thursday night, or do we, I mean, I'm gonna, how many interviews are we gonna have? 50 something, 30 something?
What do we need? That's.
Yeah. How many interviews are we looking at?
So it just kind of depends. If you guys plan on putting all the regulatory through that don't have any contention, then it would be about 36 is what I calculated. So it's up to the Board's discretion. If you'd like to do every other Thursday, it's just more load, you can spread it out evenly over each Thursday. It's up to the Board's discretion.
Members do serve until a successor is appointed, too.
I'm okay with every other, but I want to hear, I want to hear from the Board.
I think, me too, but I think it is important that we try to do the regulatory boards earlier, because those are the most important ones in terms of legal complications potentially if the bodies are not fulfilled with full complement. I did have, Mr. Chairman, I did want to suggest that in those instances where a Select Board Member might want to pull a particular name for an interview, somehow we've got to make clear that that doesn't necessarily mean to that individual that they're being, you know, targeted for potential removal, or, I shouldn't say removal, non-appointment. Somehow, I don't know how we phrase that, but I, and I support it. I support the proposal. I think it's very efficient, but I think we have to be careful how that is presented.
Yeah, I think that's a good point.
The other question is, what if, what if there are members of Boards or Committees that are, whether they're regulatory or non-regulatory, who want to be interviewed, who express an interest in being interviewed?
I think then we interview them. I mean, I think then we interview them.
Okay. All right.
You got that, Alec?
All good. Thank you.
Okay, and we already talked about number, quorum, three? I guess three, let's see, okay, yep. So first and third Thursdays of every month, okay, to start. And if we don't need to meet so often, we won't. Mr. Castro for the next item, to consider naming the Family Preschool Support Program after Dr. Florence Selden. Mr. Castro.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do appreciate whoever put this on the agenda for tonight. I think it was Shereen, maybe, and Jill, as Peter was leaving, but I think the proposal speaks for itself. I mean, we all know Florence Selden was, by her profession and her commitment, very passionate about education, about housing, and trying to keep young families, attract young families in to Chatham. And this particular program, the Family Preschool Support Program, was something on which she played an integral part, because she would, she saw this as one tool for trying to achieve that goal. So I think it would be an appropriate way to memorialize her contribution to our community for years to come, to name the program, the Dr. Florence Selden Family Preschool Support Program, and I move that to the Board take that action.
I'll second that, Peter. I mean, Dean, gosh.
Excellent. So any discussion, any comment, anybody? Corey?
No, very supportive. I think it's appropriate, and I think, and I believe Florence's family's been notified of this, and they're very supportive of this also, so I'm on board.
Yeah, I too think, I think it's wonderful, I think it's a great gesture, very appropriate, very committed to education and to our youth and to the community, and very, very appropriate, so certainly gonna vote for it. Jill?
Mr. Chair, I reached out to the Stakeholders Group, and they were in favor of it as well. Thank you.
Yeah, excellent. Okay, so it's been moved and seconded, and we'll take a vote. We'll start with Corey.
Aye.
Mr. Shell.
Aye.
Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Castro.
Aye.
And the Chair says aye, resoundingly aye. Thank you very much. Okay. And the last item on the agenda, we have a report, I believe, from Katie Donovan on flood insurance program, some changes, some positive changes. Take it away, Katie.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So pleased to announce tonight that the Town of Chatham's classification for the National Flood Insurance Programs Community Rating System has increased from a Class VIII to a Class VII. The increase in classification will result in flood insurance savings for flood insurance policyholders in the Town of Chatham from 10% to 15%, and this will affect approximately 465 current policyholders in town. The rates will go into effect upon issuance of or policy renewal on or after October 1st. I'd like to acknowledge Jay Briggs, our Building Commissioner, and Christina Basset from the Community Development Department who worked with me on this reclassification. And I'd also like to recognize Shannon Hulse from Barnstable County, who's the Regional CRS Coordinator. I've been a CRS Coordinator for over 20 years in Chatham and in other communities, and never had a more seamless process going through the reclassification, so I think that's just something that we're very fortunate to have in Barnstable County, so just wanted to make that recognition, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
I just have one, Katie, that it was increased from eight to seven.
Eight to seven, yes.
What's that logic?
So, so you started, communities entering the program started at a Class 10, and then for all of the efforts that we make, although it's an increase in classification, it's actually a decrease in the number, but that's just the way it works within the CRS program.
Super, and this will ultimately save folks money?
Yes, actually, in the Town of Chatham, the savings overall will go from about $48,000 to about $68,000 a year in flood insurance savings.
Excellent. Okay, I don't believe there's any action needed by the Select Board unless you have further questions for Katie.
Thank you.
It was a good package you put together. Thank you very much, Katie. Okay, the final item on our agenda is a executive session, so I will turn my attentions to Selectman Castro, who will move the executive session.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Select Board go into executive session under Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 30A, Section 21, Number 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the Chair so declares, with no return to open session. Brackets, New England Police Benefit Association, NEPBA, Chatham, Local 115, close bracket.
In a second. Thank you. Let's take a vote. Vice Chairman Metters.
Aye.
Clerk Shell.
Aye.
Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Selectman Castro.
Aye.
And the Chair says aye. Thank you very much, Chatham, 35 minutes later, thank you very much.